Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It is Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is nine oh five. John, could you call the roll order, please?
Sure. Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Regan.
President.
Commissioner King.
Here.
I'll present.
Well, we'll move on to the public hearing. With regard to the addition of vacant public way in Delaware County, Indiana.
This is you.
Sure. So the commissioners received a petition to vacate some right-of-way in the south side of the county, south of sixty-seven. If you, I've sent along a little map of the area that's being vacated. It's property that was originally acquired by the state. It was right-of-way property acquired by the state, so they didn't acquire ownership. They just acquired right-of-way, but it was then abandoned or relinquished to the county back in the late nineties. And now the property owner to the south requested the area be vacated, so I think he was wanting to maybe put a shed or something to that extent over in that general vicinity, but with the property lines where they were, it was just the vacation was the easier process for him. So plus, he's already maintaining that area, so it just made sense for him all around. But at the end of the day, everything is staying exactly the same. So it's just a small area that can be vacated and doesn't affect actual road or right-of-way at all.
John, are you sending any comments or anything for or against this?
No, I have not.
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and second to close the public hearing. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
I have your license. You ready?
Steve, can you hear? I don't have audio for Steve.
John, can you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Sure. Well, I can't hear you, Steve. Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Regan.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes. I'd also like to remind everybody that they can send their questions or comments to commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. That is, if you have any questions or comments, you can forward those to commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. Next, we'll move to table business resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero one, resolution of Delaware County Board of officials establishing policy and procedures to protect the quorum and foster the effective administration of public meetings. John, would you like to further have a discussion about this?
Yes. The resolution was tabled last time to add some provisions for the that we're having. I added that in a separate paragraph. I sent that to everybody to reinforce the issue about sending comments to commissioners@co.delaware.in.us. I sent that, copied that to everybody for their comments. I didn't receive any comments back other than Commissioner King saying that was, looked acceptable. So it's now up for the commissioners to decide how they want to move on this particular resolution.
I'll make a motion. We remove.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to remove resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero one from table business. John, can you call the roll, please?
Steve, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah. There you go.
Yeah. Steve, can you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I'm going to motion we approve resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero one.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adopt resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero one. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thanks, John, for working on that.
Next, we need approval of minutes for December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, and also the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one minutes.
I've read them both, and I make a motion. We accept them.
I'll second the motion for approval.
Have a motion and a second for approval. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move to contracts or agreements for approval. First up, we have Ashton Land Surveyor grant of recreational trail easement. Do we have Kathy on here?
That'll be Phil Tavis will be introducing that.
Okay, Mr. Tavis, floor is yours.
Oh, yeah. This is a request for a grant of easement underneath the Walnut Street Bridge. The Sanitary District received a grant from the Department of Natural Resources to build a trail along the Central Levy, and they have a requirement where there is a recreational easement placed over the project. At the time of completion, the work is done, and there's a small section the commissioners own below Walnut Street Bridge that would require the easement.
Nice, nice project, Mr. President. I don't have any questions. I move with.
I'll second the approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. John, is this the one you have a question about? The easement?
I did have a question about this one. I've looked at it again. We'll see if they can get recorded. There there may be some issue. I think Joe was also looking at this one as well. But it's not a usual easement.
Okay. Are you fine with us passing this today, or?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Steve, can you call the roll, then? We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Human Resource Consulting Services, Wagner, Erwin, and Shealy.
Yes, this is a contract, just, the county's been using Wagner and Shealy for a number of years. I think the last letter of engagement they had was back about eight, nine years ago. The county's used them off and on. I asked Mr. Erwin to update and give us a new letter of engagement just to make sure that we have a current one on file.
I make a motion.
On the screen right now. The rates have not gone up.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry. Mr. Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Hen-
I said, yes, sorry.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next up, we have the decision of the Delaware County Commissioners on the grievance. John?
Yes, I put on the screen the grievance. This is the grievances, nine different grievances from the union for the nine-one-one operators, the sheriff, merit deputies, and the jailers and security bailiffs asking for additional Article twenty-three, Part B, Section five of the collective bargaining agreement. They believe they're entitled to time and a half pay for the time that they worked during the COVID pandemic for a period of six weeks, which would amount to about four hundred and forty thousand dollars being paid to them. The commissioners have looked at it, and I prepared a decision. This, if the commissioners approve this decision, then it would move into step four arbitration of the union so requesting.
With pleasure of the commissioners.
I make a motion. We approve the letter.
Second.
Second, a further discussion between the commissioners. If not, Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have the perpetual sidewalk and trail easement.
These, this and the next temporary construction easement are both easements related to the Morrison Sidewalk project on the north side of town that the redevelopment commission is currently doing. And basically, the easements are all done, good to go. They just need to be approved as accepted, I guess, by the commissioners. It's formalities that both Star Bank and Ball State have asked for. That's not typical with all the easements that have been acquired, but it's nothing out of the ordinary necessarily, so there's no reason to not worry about accepting these easements at this point.
Can we lump them together? One motion? You say yes?
Yeah, we can go ahead, Sherry, and do the Star Bank and the BSU easement spaghetti.
Don't move.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have the emergency declaration two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two.
Yes. Commissioner, this is the continuation of the current emergency declaration that is ongoing in the county. It's difficult to the governor's executive order, or governor's executive order, and relation of the emergency declaration from before. This one expires at the next meeting on February first. The county still is in a COVID pandemic. I think, according to the state, our positivity rate is fourteen percent. We're one of the few counties that's still orange. I think the entire state, except thirteen counties, are in the red category, and I think we're hanging on the orange by the skin of our teeth. I think Jamie Bing can talk about this some more.
Jamie, are you on it?
I saw him earlier.
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Looks like I lost video. I don't know what's going on with our connection over here either. Um, yeah, as John mentioned, we're still category orange. I think may be our time before we move towards that red category. It seems to be progressing that way everywhere. It almost looks like it's moving towards east central Indiana. If you'd like, I can go ahead and provide further update regarding our vaccinations.
Yeah, that'd be fine, Jamie.
Okay. We started vaccinations last week. The state has allotted us three hundred doses per week so far. We were offered an additional two hundred for this week, which we accepted, so we don't know if that's going to be an ongoing increase or a one-time. So far, it's been portrayed as if it's a one-time. We've requested additional. We've requested information about when we would start to receive additional vaccine. We're not getting any answers on that. I think it's a big unknown for the state as well as to how much the state's going to be receiving and then trying to piece that out to all the different counties. It appears it's, it's being allotted to counties based on population. So smaller counties, some of our neighboring counties, for example, are receiving like one hundred doses, whereas we've been receiving three hundred. Clinic has gone smoothly. A lot of good compliments on the flow and people very happy with the way they were treated and the fact that we were able to keep them socially distanced and they felt safe. Those are all important things to us here. Our county should see an increase in overall doses going into this week and going forward. Open Door and Meridian have both come online. They're receiving vaccine from the state. I believe it's eight hundred doses each there. So we will now have the hospital, our office, an Open Door site, and a Meridian site available for scheduling through the ourshot.in.gov or through Kyle's ourshot.dellawarcounty. You'll have to tell me in a minute. Kyle, drawing a blank on that one off the top of my head. But that's, that's very promising that we're going to have that available. The priority groups still remain the same as they were. We do anticipate changes to that in the very near future, though, based on the state's using a their own kind of internal metrics based on the number of people in any given priority group and how long it takes them to get through a certain percentage of those people. Managed to meet that criteria for the eighty-year-olds, so they opened it up to seventy-year-olds. Once we can move through a certain percentage of seventy-year-olds being vaccinated, we'll move that group down further, most likely to sixty-five or sixty-year-olds, or potentially to certain categories of occupation. I know teachers are one hot topic right now where there's been a lot of demand for them to be vaccinated. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
So Jamie, this is, Jamie and I talk a lot, of course, and, and daily aggravating that he's been trying to get doses, doses increased at the health department. We can't get an increase. And the state health department, we came to John, John's on here too, but they communicate with John, with our health department, say they are going to put up a vaccine site at our fairgrounds this weekend. John, do you have any other information on that?
Good morning, Commissioner John Cottino, Delaware County, May. Yeah, I do. Heather, Hannah Carpenter reached out to me on Sunday afternoon and was looking for a potential vaccination site. They needed a building inside that they could use. There's a list of requirements, so we found one. I talked to Commissioner Henry. We found the fairgrounds. Unfortunately, yesterday, or this morning, late last night, this morning, I got received an email from Hannah Carpenter now saying that they are going with other counties in our district, not our county. So they were going to set up a vaccination site for this coming weekend, the twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. They would supply all the doses, staffing, cleaning, take care of the building. They just needed a facility. And now they've changed that and are not going to be using that here in Delaware County now. So it just goes to show that there's still a lack of communication there, and it's unfortunate. I let Jamie know this morning and told him that we would bring this up today. So in a matter of less than twenty-four hours, it went from, we're going to be there this coming weekend to, sorry, we've, we're going to go with another county right now. So again, the communication there between the local health department and the state health department is still null. I mean, they asked me about this, and I asked Jamie yesterday during our conference call, and he had no idea that they were even looking into bringing a, a state site here this weekend within five days. So you're correct, Commissioner, there is still no communication. We have weekly meetings amongst local health departments and ourselves and Kyle, and that's where most of our good information comes from, is those meetings, because the state does not communicate well with all of us together. So I apologize for that confusion and possible standing up of another vaccination shot would have gave us five in the county, but now we'll stick with the four, I guess.
I guess I was confused because those coming.
Yeah.
That's kind of confusing, confusing anyway. But yeah, it is aggravating that it seems like they're not communicating with our local health department.
No, not at all.
Yeah, we need to all get together on this. It's, this is.
I, I contacted the state yesterday concerning that, trying to get an explanation from them. I also spoke with other neighboring counties, and there's other counties that were completely unaware. The excuse the state gave is that it wasn't their fault, that the state EOC is who jumped the gun. No true apology for them or no owning of responsibility, just that the state EOC is who jumped the gun and that we were due to find out today. We'll see what that, what comes of that. I will follow up with the state, though, and see if if they did have vaccine allotted for us to run a clinic here, but they're not coming here. I'm going to ask for that vaccine. See if we can administer that.
Very good. I just, I just find it all unacceptable. And Jamie, your, your crew's doing a, a good job. I just, it's, it seems like we're not getting communication on that state level, and it's just aggravating.
Agreed.
I, I'd like to add something that I don't know who the EOC is. Is that what's, what that EOC stand for? Some of us laymen.
The Emergency Operations Center for the state.
Okay, so is that, does he, that person get a lot of federal monies, or?
They, they can, yes. But yeah, it's the State Department of Health and the State, Indiana Department of Homeland Security are all falling under that umbrella there.
So I think we are just going to have to wait until the new president gets elected or gets sworn in tomorrow because we are hearing that FEMA is going to be stepping in more. So you've probably heard that. It's going to be more muddy, maybe worse than it is now, but it's just going to be very confusing for maybe a week or two until everybody gets in their new positions. Appreciate what all you're doing, but I can see the frustration you're going through. Thank you.
Kyle, I know this is difficult because things are changing hourly still, but just please do your best to keep everything posted and the vaccination sites and.
Absolutely. We've been hosting a weekly call with all the local health organizations, Meridian, the hospital, and Open Door for the last couple of weeks, and it's been huge to be able to talk to everybody and know what everybody's doing, and everyone's really appreciative to be able to, be able to do that because obviously we're not all getting the same information from the state.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Keep up the good work, guys. We're going to have to have a motion and a second for the emergency declaration.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Since there probably will be no further discussion. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move to ordinances for first reading. We have ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero one, ordinance amending Title Four of the Delaware County Code regarding Chapter Two permit fees. John, are you going to do this, or is Marta?
I think that, there's Marta.
Yeah, I'm up here with, with Jenny because my laptop and the county's Wi-Fi were not cooperating. So this is, I think, in the, in the ordinance itself, it does say that the last time the fees were raised was in two thousand and thirteen, so that's almost eight years ago. And the building commissioner had done some research back in the winter of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty to do comparable information from some similar communities and, and surrounding counties. And I believe I included that in the information that I forwarded, and in a lot of cases, particularly with straight comparable communities, we were, our fees are low. And I know the, in the office, there are contractors that frequently say, boy, your permits are low. So we have gone through and are proposing changes to the schedule as set forth in Exhibit A. And basically, a lot of them are like for residential, the standard is five dollars per one hundred square feet. We're raising that to seven fifty per one hundred square feet. And the minimums are going up from like sixty dollars to seventy-five dollars. So it's, it's not a huge increase. I did not figure out the percentage of the increase, but I can do that for next time. But if you, if you have any questions or concerns or would like some additional information, just let me know.
Okay. With the pleasure of the commissioners.
I went through it. I think it looks appropriate. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance or adopt ordinance two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah. I'll second.
This is actually the first reading, so this would be introduction only.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter number twenty-one dash zero zero two. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I believe that was zero zero one, wasn't it?
I have two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero two.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, it's zero one. Yeah, my, my fault.
Yeah.
Yes. Now we'll move to ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero two. Ordinance right-of-way located in Delaware County.
This is just the ordinance related to the vacation the right-of-way that you had the public hearing on at the start of the meeting.
I'll make a motion. We introduce.
Introduce. Go ahead. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move to department heads and elected officials.
James, I just have one thing on Circuit Court Six. We talked about the letter that we possibly may want to send.
Yes.
In reference to that court. Is that, that something that we still want to do?
I would still like to do it because we don't have the funding. And when this all came about, there was discussion about using fees, I believe from the city court to do the build-out and also possibly to help with with staffing, which, from my understanding, didn't go through at the time. So we can always come back and revisit this. But right now, I just, I can't see us really being stuck with a three to four hundred thousand dollar build-out possibly another additional one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for employees right now, especially with COVID on right now and decreasing our budgets.
Well, I, I think I read John forwarded a city mail from one of the judges. I did read that. They have the operations down to possibly, I think it was fifty-seven thousand dollars. But I guess what, what aggravates me is we wasn't really initially, when all this happened, we wasn't included in a lot of that conversation, nor do I believe the council was in that conversation, and council's the one that has to fund the operations. So I, I just, I, I find it a little aggravating that now we're trying to work to get this done and, and you know, originally, like I said, we wasn't included. So I'll make, I'll make a motion. We approve the, the signatures on the letter to the Ways and Means Committee.
Sherry, did you have anything?
Well, I thought John had been working on it with them, and I did read the fifty-seven thousand dollar total. They thought the employees- They thought the employees it was going to justify. And I'm just a firm believer that if a judge and five judges say they need something, that we should listen to them and the prosecutor. Um, I just don't like for us to. Thank you for more. So, thank you.
Well, I'll second, uh, Commissioner Henry's motion. Is there any further discussion? Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
No.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Do we have anything else from any department heads, elected officials?
I will change the letter to reflect, um, Ms. Rigan's, uh, dissent to this letter, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to payment of claims in amount of $1,538,749 and 38 cents.
Don't move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for payment of claims. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Uh, I do have a question. For John. Uh, John, and, um, I was having trouble getting here today and I apologize. I haven't looked over the claims that we're approving. But I did have a question, John, about a payment that's going out to California for a roller. I- is there any way that you can put, um, money like this in a escrow somewhere and that, um, it's $45,000 and it just seems nowadays, I just don't trust a lot of people.
I, I don't understand. There's a claim going, paid to who in California?
A company that, um, is going to send us a roller and then we're going to pay the balance, I believe, when it arrives. And, uh, you just hear stuff nowadays. I just wonder, even wiring money sometimes can be tru- troublesome.
I, I think, I think they're going to mail, I think the intent was to mail a check. And I think, um, Cherry's question is, is there any other way you can transfer funds without wire transfer by mail? Is that correct, Cherry?
Well, yes, but just to hold it until, like you do when you do an escrow for a build out on a house or something. Or maybe you just check out the company, I guess. Uh, Shannon, is it a new piece or a used piece? This particular roller, this, the second one they purchased.
It's, it's used, but it has, um, there's still a lot of use left in the roller. It's got minimal hours on it.
I didn't feel too bad about the first one. They, I think they'd worked with that company before. But, uh, the second one, I just, I didn't know anything about it and was curious.
Yeah, is, is Carrie or, uh, Troy on here? I know, uh, Tommy Humbert had someplace he had to be today and wasn't going to be with us. But Shannon, did you ask for Carrie and Troy to be available?
Yeah, they're, they're both on.
Can you guys answer, uh, Cherry's question?
Yes, I have the invoice ready to submit for payment. Um, and on the invoice, it does say that, um, they are required to, um, have that roller to us within 30 days of having payment being paid. Um, the roller is just like the one that we're getting from North Carolina. It's my understanding it does have less hours on it than the North Carolina one.
Yeah, the reason for this, getting these two rollers is we had the old stuff rollers that were like 1988 and 1989. And we had, um, one go down and just irreparable. So we just got to upgrade to continue our maintenance throughout the county or we just couldn't maintenance this year if we didn't get them.
Yeah, I, and I, and I know the need is there. I'm just wary of doing business nowadays with. I don't know.
I understand that, um, Shane and Carrie's handled it and they got everything in the invoice. And I think it's a really good deal.
Oh, yeah.
Carrie, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm okay. I just wanted to know if John's ever heard of something about, no.
There, there are all sorts of, um, options that you could have. You can put in escrow, you can hold the funds until it's delivered, you can wire transfer it. Uh, there, there are options. Uh, it seems that that should have been negotiated with the, um, vendor.
Right. Well, maybe John just vet him a little bit. I'd feel better.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Denise, did you?
I'm sorry.
I'll take, yeah, who's with Carrie for Denise?
Troy, Troy and I are here.
Okay, all right. You guys are all masked up. I can't recognize you.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're together, so we're trying to do the face covering stuff.
Good idea. Thank you.
Okay, we had the, uh, motion. Did we get a second on the payment of claims?
Yes, we did.
We already, we already passed that, Mr. King.
Okay.
I just know that, I just knew that it would be going in the mail soon.
John, do you have anything on the email about, uh, public comments or questions or anything?
I do not.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything for the commissioners?
I'll make a, go ahead. Recede.
We have a motion to recess in a second.
Second.
Shannon, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Okay. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Rigan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Go to recess.
Thank you, James. Thanks, Mr. Henry. Everybody be safe.